Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission on December 19th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Stephen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All right. All in favor of the agenda as stated? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Next is the approval of the minutes from December 5th. Take a motion to approve those?
I'll move them.
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Neil. Any discussion? I actually, yeah, I didn't have anything serious other than there was a line that Chris Robinson said people are aware, which makes it easier to come to resolution. And just in reading it, if it was me that said something like that, I probably would have wanted to clarify my intent. So I meant to shoot him a note and just realized I didn't. Perhaps with, could we say with that caveat to be amended if he wants to or defer it?
Yeah. If you want it, if, I'm not really thinking that you would put it on hold or make it contingently.
Could we just change it to say that people are aware of the upcoming changes? Or that some people, isn't that what he was saying?
Yeah. I just didn't want it to make it, when I read this, I was thinking that he was saying, oh, people are aware, so this should be pretty straightforward, but it's not that, I don't think.
Thought, so to say. This reminds me of thought, people are aware.
Or like indicated people were aware, which might make it easier.
Wonders?
Yeah.
Just like the sense. Serious.
It's a good point. I don't want to get hung up on this. I just, yeah, I would be okay with that. Although, I mean, he was here and he commented. Let's just leave it in. I can, I'll, I'll reach out and if you'd like to amend, then there's got to be a way to amend minutes that have been approved, right?
Minutes, well, and since we do it the way that we do it. The later minutes would, would show.
Right.
That what really happened was.
Okay.
I think, I'm recollecting that he said when people are aware.
There was enough gray area that I flagged it, yeah.
Yeah. Because that was part of the problem, was that people are not aware. That's one of the things we were discussing, so.
Right. And that was the context that we're, I'd be okay with saying when. I would still send him a note just to say that's what we've recalled.
Decide for sure.
Yeah, okay. So instead of, so, said when people are aware.
Makes it easier to come to.
Yeah, and then get rid of which. Okay. Okay. Good. Okay. Any other comments on these minutes?
None.
All right. Seeing none, all in, or no more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The, next, any disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest this evening?
I would share with the board that in two previous jobs I've worked with Michael Monte and Tyler Scott, that those have been many years past and I don't expect it'll influence my work here this evening.
Yep. I'm good with that.
I was with Rotary with Tyler many, many moons ago in Essex.
Oh, yeah. You're compromised.
Yeah, absolutely.
But all right. So we're all good, then open to the public if there's anything not on tonight's agenda that anybody would wish to comment on. All right. Seeing none. Then we'll move on to the form-based zoning topic, which is Tyler?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you want? Or do we want to just have it over?
Okay. Okay. So, we've spoken before about this project, which is where the bowling alley is, and to give some idea, this is the project area right there. It is in the corridor here on Shelburne Road, and it's right across from Martindale. So it does end up, you know, in the mixed-use street area there. And that is, I mean, it's an interesting area. Suppose we move on to the next slide here. I guess that, what is next here, Dean?
Just the page down.
Use the wheel or page down? So the site itself, and we can probably reduce this down a little bit here.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
My mistake.
Sorry. I'm running this in my right hand and I'm left-handed here. So this is the show, this is the bowling alley right now. Martindale is right over here on the, on the right. And the entrance to the bowling alley currently is about aligned to that, but actually would shift just a hair north, somewhere in there, although I'm not entirely sure if that's exactly correct on that point right there. But suffice to say that what would happen is that between this corner here and this corner here, our, our access would line up a little bit north of where the entrance is right now to the bowling alley, if it were to align with Martindale. And the thing I want you to notice on this is how far and how fast this site drops off, which is about 16 feet. It's not a small amount, which is a relatively unique character of the sites just along this part of Shelburne Road, and a challenge in itself, because it doesn't give you a lot of movement in the east-west direction. So, so anyway, I just wanted to point that out. So this building obviously is still here, this parking lot's here and whatever, so it's just sort of a mess. So what we've been looking at, and this is, we have approached this layout with the idea that it would be an affordable housing project. Michael Monte is here from Champlain Housing Trust. And we certainly appreciate the recommendations and requirements and goals of the Form-Based Code, but what we're trying to do is, is illustrate what would work really for affordable housing. And we, we, with the density that's allowed on this site, we can get up to 33 units, which is what we are showing right now. We have a 24-unit structure and then essentially a two-story, nine-unit wing to that, so it's essentially one, one building, but it's, it sort of looks like two. But the idea being that this build-to-zone district here, area, would not be built on only because, well, primarily because having an access here, which is really our only choice, because there would be a light here, or there is a light here rather, at Martindale, splits this lot into two odd sizes that economically really throws a monkey wrench into things. And it's this site, you know, I'm just saying, it's not, you know, if Martindale were further south, or Martindale were further north, life would be easier. But right now, it is not, and there really, it makes no sense to access this site from any other place. This, this pale line here is the, an access that could occur from the mobile home park that surrounds this. If, because right now, they don't have an access, they have an access on the Shelburne Road, but it's basically a right-hand turn only. So this would give them access if it were to be, if they were to exercise maybe a right across this, we're not sure. So our thought would be to allocate some land for a pocket park, either on one or both sides, and that we would actually put our building back.
I'm sorry, what was that? On what sides? Occupied what?
Possibly a park, a municipal park of some sorts.
Park.
Park, yes, I'm sorry.
Parking park.
Yeah. Yeah. And we would give access, obviously, from the sidewalk down here, but, and then we would have parking here, we'd have parking for whatever activity could occur here, and then parking underneath this building here. And then we'm sure we would need stormwater down here. And so that was the goal, really, or that's a situation that would work well for an affordable housing situation. If they were to look at this in a more three-dimensional manner, that's the way, I mean, this is just a very, much, essentially a block diagram of how the volumes might work on this. And, but what it doesn't tell you is how far this sits down on the site. In other words, if you run this down, you can see where up here, Shelburne Road, we're, we're coming across at a pretty good clip, and we're dropping down at a pretty good clip as you head west towards the lake. So that's a, that's a challenge for any building right up on Shelburne Road. In other words, if you want parking in the back, that's a real challenge, because suddenly you're down below the ground floor of the building and getting back up and around is, is a challenge. So, anyway, this is what we would like to propose. I would encourage Michael.
Sure. Get into this just from a.
It's okay if I move it over here, yeah. I think that's the idea, right? So thanks for the opportunity, Michael Monte, Chief Operating Officer, Champlain Housing Trust. And we worked with Mr. Scott on quite a few projects now, if I went through the list of it. So he's, we have confidence in his, in his thinking. We're not necessarily site planners, but we do know that when we have to build a building, the best building is a two or three-story building, especially in Shelburne, and that they really should be one building. When you get to a two or three-story building and you have two buildings, you have two elevators. You have, you have now a whole bunch more different stairwells that you have to build in order to give people different accesses, access points. And frankly, the cost of construction over the last year or two, as labor is shorter and, and materials, where we used to sort of build at, in downtown Shelburne, in Shelburne Village, where we built the last project, we had several smaller buildings, you know, we were sort of looking at that and saying, gee, we can't do that right now. It's just really difficult to do from a cost perspective, and we're really being pushed on our costs for construction. Our costs for construction are typical of the industry, but nevertheless, if you look at what the industry's building, they're building three, four-story buildings with, and they're one building. And that's really the standard right now at this point for apartment buildings.
Are there any three-story apartment buildings in Shelburne right now?
It's up to the chair.
Okay.
So I would say that, you know, this is the kind of, this is the kind of building we'd want, want to build. I think we'd be successful at it. We, we're sort of an informal relationship right now with Mr. Davis and Mr. Pecor in terms of desiring to do it. When Mr. Pecor came to us and talked to us about buying the mobile home park, we said, nah, go ahead and make a co-op out of it. Did well with Shelburne Wood and, and the village, and, and we sort of encouraged him to do that. And so he came to us and said, how about this bowling alley? And other than the fact that I love the bowling alley, I would, I think this would be a great site and a great opportunity for some affordable rental at this part. It's got great access on the street, great access for, for people with going to work at different locations, great access with the bus. And we think we'd be, people would be served well here with good, good solid apartments at a range of incomes, so.
Can I just add something? I'm Jeff Davis and I'm a friend of the Pecor family. They asked me to get involved because they would like to, with the consummation of the sale of the park to the west, which was very generous on the part of their family, they, they said we'd like to do something that's, in the, in the spirit of the community on the front part, instead of, I think in their words, they said, we don't want to do the next Dollar General in the, in the, in the building that's there. So that's when Michael came in, and the Pecor family really wants to do something that's community-oriented. Affordable housing fits that, and I think what Tyler's going to describe is we can't quite design something for Michael and still exactly meet the rules and have been in discussions with Dean about what changes or relief we might need to be able to do this project so that the Pecors can move forward and do a deal with, with Champlain Housing Trust. So that's, that's really our mission, is to see if the commission has the same type of thinking that the Pecor family does, so that I can advise them that they can go forward with affordable housing.
I guess I would also add that, this is maybe arguing against myself a little bit, but if anybody's going to build apartments here, this is the way it should be done. You know, we're not built, we don't build it around an income of an individual, we build around the, the smartness of the design, the opportunity for the design, the opportunity of the site. I think Tyler, if you were going to go to somebody else, you might, you might add a fancier roof and maybe a place to wash their dogs and, you know, a few other things that we might not do as an expense, but, you know, we're, we find ourselves building types of buildings that are just like what the private sector is doing, with, you know, less amenities because of the expense related to those, operating those, those amenities. But this is really, I think probably, and Tyler could tell me if I'm wrong, but I think this is a great, this would be a great building from a private sector perspective, and you've seen the private sector build buildings just like this all along Shelburne Road, if not bigger and kind of massive in other ways, frankly. This is actually, from a design perspective, three stories, it's going to look like two stories as it falls down the hill. And you're not going to see most of the, the back part of it from the roadway, so it's going to be pretty, I think, relatively sits pretty well in sort of in this site as it is. It's a, I think, good design solution. From Tyler?
The other, the other, the other thing is that the, as Tyler described, the site is cut in half by the existing traffic signal, which is the logical place to develop. And with the, with the modular park to the west, we don't know whether they have the right to come out through the parking lot like they have for years and get to the signal and be able to go north or south, but it's probably the right thing to do. Right now, they have to come out and turn right, a lot of them do U-turns once they head south and then come around to the north, so it's the right thing to do. They also may have the right to do that through adverse possession because they've done it for years and years. So we think that it's, it's the safe solution for the traffic that comes out of those units out in the back.
You know, I think what you'll find, if construction were to occur in the build-to-zone area, what we've come up with, realized is you'd end up with two buildings about 2,100 square feet to 2,300 square feet each. And if we were to do housing also, which is the intent, and the parking still would be a challenge. In other words, the building wouldn't, wouldn't be much different than something across here and then down and across, or maybe stepped away from this edge, and then this next one would be starting somewhere in here and running down to about here because of the setbacks. You see what I'm saying? And you end up with these two buildings that are almost un-leasable, is the issue. And even then, we can't get to the percentage of coverage of the build-to-zone area because of the way this access is. So we're close, but we can't even get to it. So the problem is you end up with these two tiny little buildings that just have really not enough floor plate, if you're to do it, to make something that's economically feasible. And, you know, if it's not economically feasible, it's going to sit there empty for god knows how long. You know, that's the problem. And, you know, along this portion of Shelburne Road, I would doubt that buildings have smaller floor plates, how small whatever these. So that's one of the challenges we, challenges we ran into. And you can see the site, I mean, it's a trapezoidal odd-shaped site and divided right at the wrong spot. And it's just the bad luck of the way the boundaries are. You know, it's not, no one created this lot thinking about this, obviously, it just was a result of overtime, and that's what we've ended up with. So we've got a unique problem. We're proposing a solution that would be a community-minded solution that we think would work. I think, you know, we would certainly look more carefully at the landscaping towards the front and, and in other locations. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but certainly in this area, I could see some more extensive landscaping, something up in here, whatever. We could certainly work with whomever to develop something here where people could pull off, use this spot, this area here, come back, or, or both. But my point is, is that this doesn't illustrate what could be landscaping-wise, a real asset to the community also, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You're going for, you're, you're looking for, to use the form-based zoning and take the benefit of, of the increased floor area and number of units. I assume that's why you're here.
Yeah.
What is it that you're, that you can't do? We're not, nobody's, everybody, I think, here agrees that this is a great building for this site, and I don't think you need to sell us on that, personally. I mean, that's my opinion. But why can't this be more like the form-based zoning and just be closer to the road? What is the reason that it has to be so far back from the road in order to be so against what form-based zoning is all about, which is pushing things closer to the road?
I think it's primarily because if it's going to be residential, it's, it's the noise, Stephen. It's just.
Well, you've got more units facing the noise than if you would turn the main block 90 degrees, right? So you've got half your units face the noise.
But they're step far, far enough back that I think the idea was to pull it back as far as we could. Yes, you could do that. It wouldn't be optimal for residents, you know, for residential occupancy. I think that was the intent, was to pull it back.
But you could do it.
You probably could do it. You could, you could turn that, it wouldn't work quite as well for parking and this sort of thing. We're trying to work with the longest part of the building parallel to the topos as much as we could, just from a point of economics also. But yes, you could, sure you could.
So you could get this thing sliding up the hill?
You could.
And it's a pretty steady grade from the road right down to the back of the lot, so it's.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter where you put it, you're still dealing with the same amount of drop from front to back.
That's pretty much, yeah. Yeah. It's just, I think it was just if we, if we could set it back, then we could create even a nicer environment for the apartments. That was it.
So some of them, a few more of them face the lake and get a view of the lake, is that?
I think it's just the stepping away from the road, just the sound, Stephen, that's all. That was the, that was it. You know what I'm saying?
I think that the sound doesn't diminish by that short a distance, I don't think, in my limited knowledge of sound. There's no, nothing blocking the sound. There's nothing.
Well.
There's no mass to keep it from.
How many feet is that?
It is, no, the building itself is about 62 feet wide east-west, so you look at that, it's probably more like, yeah, probably close to 100.
Oh, basically.
So when we, when we took away the node designation from that, which had the closer setback, the restricted setbacks, where are the setbacks now? I should know that.
Well, it's going to be a function of the building type and the map, I believe, so.
Because as, as we're looking at this, the, I get, I get the building envelope as a challenge, but it's also, I know we'd want to, I like the idea of having that access road to the intersection, so that.
Yeah, that's.
I feel like that's.
That's limiting for that.
Yeah, and that, but then in terms of the way Form-Based is written, I'm just trying to think of the best way to get there, because changing the general Form-Based rules for that business type or that area is too, too broad. So I'm just wondering how that could look in terms of a waiver due to like a unique lot layout or to accommodate that unique situation. Because we've known since the beginning, since the first presentation here, that it's just a weird lot, the light being right in the middle there.
Right.
It doesn't really fit with having a building along the frontage like that.
Looking larger at form-based zoning, the question of quality of life for housing close to the road is something I think we should think about, because if we're seeing more housing going up under the code, how big, because you have noise, you have particulate matter, if you, we should just think about the impact of how our zoning is going to do that, I think. What the impact, what the impact's going to be if it's all housing going close to the road versus businesses, which is what was maybe originally envisioned.
Well, I mean, I think originally what was envisioned was the, was the mixed use, and that's why the first floor active ground, and if you have more pedestrian and things get more interconnected.
But that wouldn't be part of something like this anyway, right?
Well, we removed that requirement. I think we did, right? Isn't that part of the?
The node.
What was the question?
No, didn't, we took away the, didn't we take away the first floor of retail or create a?
Yeah, the, the frontage zone went away, and as a result of the frontage zone going away, the active ground floor uses went away.
Right.
The things that I see being raised by this proposal are modification to the build-to-zone, what's the setback here? And what's the distance between the front of this building and the edge of the parcel?
I don't know exactly, but I think it's in the range of 100 feet roughly to the boundary.
So, so there would be conflict with the, the build-to-zone, the build-to-zone occupancy.
What's, what's the?
Well, the build, for the building, for the building type, the expectation is normally that it's between 10 and 30 feet from the, the principal or the primary street. The primary street setback. Under the regulating plan, there's an allowance for the maximum to be 50 feet, although I'm realizing now that there's something about the map that, in the warning, that may not have been taken care of. But so, say 50, and so that's still half of what it sounds like we just heard. So, build-to-zone, build-to-zone occupancy, both in the regulating plan and for the building type. The maximum number of units allowed in the building type, because right now the building type maxes out at 24, so that would be another change that would be required if you were going to adapt form-based zoning for this project. And of course, you'd need to do it over a larger area than just one parcel. We're not, it's not as easy a change as just wiping away the frontage zone, if you get what I'm saying.
That's where I was going with this. Some of the changes on the surface that would be being requested, the way, the easier way to implement it would be to apply to that area or that building type or something like that from a form-based perspective. And this is very much uniquely an issue due to a unique lot size.
Frankly, the easiest way to change the zoning regulations to accommodate this would be to amend the underlying zoning and not do it through form-based zoning. It would be to create some kind of mechanism. No one would be cussing about the location of the drive if the default zoning said there could be 32 units on this and the setbacks were what was allowed under, for traditional zoning. So if under traditional zoning in this location for a lot of this size, there was higher density and then some kind of density bonus that rewarded for some kind of public facilities like a park, that would be a simpler set of changes, I think, than what you'd be talking about through form-based zoning.
Right now, we've given out only 19 units, given traditional zoning, which is why we, we, in order to, for this to be economically feasible, we needed to go a little over, at least 30, 31, 32. This, given the fact that 7,500 square feet for the first three, 2,000 square feet for each additional 33 units is what we were allowed on this site, given the square footage. So that worked economically, so. And typically, that's where we're focused at in most of our affordable housing projects, is that, that range. It was just, you know, it's just a economic cutoff, you know, that below that, it just starts to dwindle down. it's just a economic cutoff, you know, that below that, it just starts to dwindle down. So, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think, however it changes, I think that 33 units, that would be a very helpful situation. You know, to, to answer your question, Steve, you could push it a little bit forward, you know. We looked at it and said, if we could keep it back, can we do it? But we can push it a bit forward, but as you see by the shape of that site, the further east we go, the further north that building shoves north. It's not an unsolvable issue in any means. It just, yeah, it just causes things to move around. And we also were concerned about this access from the mobile home park coming across there. How far do we want to be away from that? So, there are some-
Wouldn't it be better, like, I'm asking everybody here.
It seems to me it'd be better if the, the driveway, potential driveway from the mobile home park didn't go through the front yard as far as streetscape and, and just how it looks from, from the road. So I have a two-part question. Like, can the mobile home park access Shelburne Road directly without, you know, unduly burdening everybody that's, that lives there? And maybe this ship has already sailed since Ray P. Corr has already sold the, the mobile home park. But isn't a property line adjustment, or could a property line adjustment be possible to just get rid of that diagonal, pull it more toward the, toward the mobile home park to get you a bigger frontage on Route 7?
I think there's a home to the, to the south of the boundary line existing, so I think that's been sold. But the other issue is the highway is divided out there, so, so they couldn't get a full-service intersection further south of the Martindale. They wouldn't be able to turn left.
But they can still turn right. And there's lots of businesses and houses that turn right or left because they have to. And that's, that's typical.
We, we just, we're not sure the legalities. There's a lot of Vermont law and adverse possession, and they've, they've, they've used that route for years and years and years.
The school bus, is that route? The school bus, the Shover County School goes down that street after-
So they, they-
I have questions about this.
They may have the legal right to do it, but we thought it was the right thing to do to give them a better access since there's so many homes there to get them to a light so they can go north or south instead of going south and then doing a U-turn like, like a lot of people do.
I have questions about some zoning regulation issues. I wondered before-
Get into that, we get into that, if we could make sure that everybody in the audience who's here to speak to this issue has had an opportunity to do so.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that wasn't necessarily the intent of this section. But yeah, you're obviously here and have some questions. I want to make sure you have a chance to speak.
I do have some questions.
Could you use the mic as well? No, could you use the microphone?
Well, I really don't need a microphone.
No, it's for the TV, for the, yeah.
The first building I'm looking at in the center, is that-
Three stories of units and then a parking garage underneath? Or is it two stories of units with a parking garage underneath?
It's, it's three with a parking garage that starts it down at this level and goes underneath. So the parking garage should be married to be-
Okay, so three stories of units though, a ground floor and two more.
Yes, it's three stories of units and grade would be at essentially floor level of the, the lowest level here. In other words, this, we would start from this point and just cut into the hill and then come back out.
Okay. But again, it would be three levels of living housing units.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
Correct. Okay. And then the building to the left of it-
Would be two.
Would be two.
Yes.
Okay, so my question-
Without, without parking underneath.
So if you said your maximum as far as a feasibility would be 33 units, and the rules say 24 units, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Traditional, but Form Base is-
24.
Now, two things. The maximum number of-
Of units under traditional zoning was 19. The total number that's possible under Form Base is 33, but Form Base also says you can't have a building with more than 24 in it. So that would mean that you have to break it up into two buildings to do 33.
So that's that separate building on the left to bring it up to 33?
How many units would be in that building on the left?
There'd be nine, nine there. So 24 and nine, which would be our 33.
But they're trying to connect them. So it's, it's just, again, more economically-
That's correct. It allows, yeah, it just gives better access.
One elevator, one below and then-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm curious, when the school bus comes, 33 units, let's say that's going to be a lot of kids getting picked up by a school bus. How does the school bus maneuver to turn around in there or picking up the kids? That's something I think in your design you're going to have to consider. I mean, Lucy Cooney's an amazing bus driver, but let's not give her any more challenges than Charity has. Secondly, there has to be a playground for children there. I mean, there's nothing else around there.
No, I, there's all sorts of site amenities that I'm sure we could-
Okay, because I mean-
We haven't done any.
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Route 7, I live down Martindale, a little bit further back. Route 7 traffic, you know, is horrendous. Luckily, my children go to the store there so they don't have to cross the street, but I couldn't imagine it getting dark at 4:30 and with that light being, you know, so long, children going back and forth. That's just something to think about, the logistics of kids. And a low-income housing development right across the street from a liquor store, I don't know what discussions are based around that, but I see that being somewhat of a quality of life issue. You know, I, I grew up in New York City, and I know when you have liquor stores and low-income housing literally 100 feet apart from each other, it kind of adds an element to the quality of life around that establishment where people tend to congregate and make that somewhat of a place to hang out, do transactions and things like that. I love the idea of the low-income housing, the, the spot makes sense for a lot of reasons, but with that liquor store there, I, I just see it being a quality of life issue that, you know, could potentially turn into some of the issues like we've had with Harbor Place, that on paper and in the discussion phase, we're all through rose lenses, everything looks great. But I probably, as little as I do read the news, I've seen enough issues where we should think about all the quality of life, not just for the residents, but for the community as well. And I'm just surprised there hasn't been more discussion about 33 possible units opening up and people aren't quite aware of even the-
I think this is different from Harbor Place, like, like night and day. It's, it's not the same time.
So can we take just a second to explain what low-income housing means? Is it Section 8? Is it, is it same as Harrington Village? I know the model's different than Harbor Place, but it seems like the way Harbor Place was described and the way it actually is aren't quite the same thing when it was in the proposing phases. So I'm just curious, what exactly does affordable housing mean?
I guess I would, I think these are all questions I'm prepared to answer, but I would, I would say that-
That's not a zoning issue. That, that this, the issue here is, can we be allowed to build 33 apartments for people regardless of income? I don't think you have in your zoning unless you do some preferences. You know, you can't, you don't say you have to declare your income necessarily unless we ask for a preference. So I would ask you not to necessarily get into these issues. I think these, these are, these are questions that could be answered. You know, I will say that we find people who are alcoholics at all incomes. We find, you know, we find issues in apartments at a wide variety of places. For this, this would be a mixed income apartment. I, I haven't gotten into the funding and the sizing of the units necessarily. You know, we've worked with Tyler in the past. We would do one, two, and three bedrooms. Remarkably enough, people want four bedrooms now on occasion, and we struggle. We sometimes put a couple of bedrooms to, a couple of apartments together. Some people might have vouchers. They have a legitimate right to do that. You can't screen for that. You all can't. Some people are going to be making up to $70,000 a year, $80,000 a year. We really now have a commitment to make, to serve people who are making 30% of median income to 120% of median income. That's a fairly wide range. That 80 to 120 is, has come from the legislature. That's a small number, but typically, it's in that, in that wide range of, of folks who are serving from an income level. But again, I would, I would respectfully ask, say, not sure if this is a zoning issue necessarily, but certainly when we go to get permits, we would be sort of telling everybody who we're serving because it's a legitimate question to sort of know what you're building and why you're building it. So that's sort of some of the answers to some of those questions.
This isn't the form for that. It sounds like we put the cart first, then the horse, where we figure out the logistics with the zoning and then talk about community input? Is that right? And I'm new to this.
That's, that's not how it works.
Okay.
No, that, that's not how it works.
Because it seems like a lot of work to put in on all these details before we know if it's going through or not.
Your questions, and we're actually, this is the time that we have for this, so we're going to need to wrap it up. But the, yeah, there are mechanisms if, if that is something that you're interested in pursuing, and that would be regarding setbacks around certain kinds of businesses. But I think that gets into some tricky territory around what you can and can't restrict and how you're labeling things. And, yeah, I mean, when you asked the question, I think it's a, it's a fair question for you to ask. It made me cringe. It's not, that's not something that we would be addressing here. The way that that could be addressed would be through adding, you know, like I said, adding setbacks or something like that. And that's not, to my knowledge, something that we have around liquor stores specifically anyway. I don't, off the top of my head, anyway.
It feels like you're asking a process question and, and- Stop me if I'm telling you stuff you already know, but from a planning commission perspective, our goal here is to look to see, are there changes that we can make to the regulations, which if we agree with this, would help this to be built? They'd still have to come forth for a zoning permit where the types of questions that you're asking, which is to say about playgrounds and, and that kind of thing, is, that would really be the place to bring those types of things to the, to the, to the, to the table. And really, what we're, what we're, and the school bus is a very valid issue also. But that's, you know, our, our role here is sort of hearing these folks out with regards to this site and this issue and try and understand, you know, if, if we see this site and we see these buildings as something that, from a community perspective, makes sense, the buildings, then are there things that we can do to the zoning regulations to help that happen? But then there's still a bunch of steps that come down the road.
I get it. I'm sorry about that. It wasn't the exact form. So just so I'm clear, the reason for tonight's discussion is the topics like they had discussed, putting it where it is setback, as well as increasing from 24 to possibly 33. Are those the two major bullet points that, the changes that are looking to be incorporated?
Yeah.
Well, 20, I, I would say that 33 units is allowable, whether it can be, whether it can be developed in a way that the, 24 is the maximum number of units per building.
Per multifamily building is according to-
Right. So what we're trying to do is essentially create a structure that looks like two buildings, but it's connected for reasons of efficiencies and because of the amenities that are offered, laundry, things like that, elevators in these, if we could have a, a common connector between essentially the two buildings, which would have two different characters, is that something that would be okay? That's what we're asking. Does that make sense, Steve? I mean, that, you see what I'm saying? So the density is there. It's just the, the way, the way it's interpreted. We're trying to come up with another way of looking at it.
I think that is something that we have to discuss because I don't know.
That's, I mean, when you're looking at a building type, it's a, I mean, yes, arguably, that is one building and two buildings, depending on what lens you're looking through.
And we're just, we're throwing out an idea, saying, the reason for this is what I just explained. So, that's it.
Could you pull back the section again? Like, is it really looking like, when, from a person down on the ground, is it really looking like two buildings or is?
Yeah.
It's one building.
I mean, just from a-
We're trying to create a roof garden here and a walkway down elevator in this area, and then a lower two-story structure here. This is two stories starting from grade. This is two stories starting from that grade, or three stories rather, from this grade up, four all the way down to here. You don't have a version of that flying in from the south, though?
No. I can see what you're talking about.
We could do it.
It's really trying to do the, the two-building thing. They're different heights and, and different kind of shapes.
And materials.
Different character, whoever. I mean, this is a very preliminary massing, obviously, so, you know, trying to get to the details at this point.
Yeah, and then certainly appreciate you coming in and presenting this. I think this has been an educational process for, for all involved because there's certainly good intention behind the Form Based overlay. And when you first came and presented with the challenges on that lot, it's, it's just good to see this evolve and the discussion continue. I think we, we would probably need to, well, if you had something to-
Well, I just wanted to point out that this building type, flat roofs aren't allowed. So there's another dimension as far as, and I wasn't joking when I said I think that the most straightforward way to address this is through traditional zoning.
Yeah, you got me thinking.
Yeah.
But then you loaded it tonight.
No, the idea is to modify the traditional zoning to yield the numbers with some kind of incentive rather than really contort, might not be too strong a word, Form Based zoning.
Aside from the density, this doesn't fit a lot of the Form Based zoning requirements.
I'm struggling to find them.
No, it's a tough site.
Yeah. And I understand why. I'm just trying to-
Make sure I'm not missing a piece of it, because I have it all.
If you had John Larkin's site where, you know, where, you know, like he has there, you could, we, that would be easy. You know, where in front of that movie theater, that's pretty tall, frankly. I think, not sure you want that tall. But, you know, but that's not what we got here. We got a roadway, we got a trapezoidal site, we have a slope, you know, and we got three or four different things coming at it. So you just go like this in order to get this in there, and that's the difficulty.
And you're absolutely right. There is a balance between ensuring, because even if it's not this used- That works. What is something else that could? And if there isn't anything that would work with the regulations that we have, then it'll just sit there and, yeah.
Better have this and meet a lot of goals at the same time.
So to summarize, the modifications that you're looking at, are the modification of the build-to-zone distance, the two buildings being one and flat roofs? Is there another-
It's really, it's really the building type. It's not, it's not really meaning the building type. So the B that-
Expand the, the building type or add a new building type, a residential three-story flat-roofed building. So it's building type, build-to-zone, build-to-zone occupancy, maximum number of units in a multifamily building.
How is it not meaning the building type?
Well-
Isn't there a building type in the Form Based zoning?
There is a multifamily building type, and I just would suggest you take a look at it and, and ask yourself whether or not that meets it. I don't think it does.
Because of the reasons like-
Because of all of the things that are specified about that building type, starting with the pitch of the roof.
So if, if we take it as a given that the building type is multifamily housing, the things that don't fit that in our Form Based zoning are?
It would need a pitch roof, and then if it's got to have a pitch roof, then at that size, it may need to have a higher height, maximum height limit? I haven't vetted it because I didn't have any of this before the meeting either.
Yeah, I, I think that there's a lot, and your point is valid, that the underlying rig update might be easier, like, but then also that backs up to, you've been trying to get these two things to look the same so that we can eventually have one set of regulations. So I, I think we would need to just take this back and get organized. What are all the things that need to get aligned and figure out what a path might look like and what that timeline might be to see if that is something that is, something we can all work with?
That'd be great, and I, I have other things to do tonight. I think the, the issues are, I think, P. Corr's perspective is they, if, if this is crazy or if this is something the commission doesn't want to see, it'll go away. He's got funding commitment dates and that kind of stuff. And so, so I, I don't know what, at what point in time you think you would have some direction as to whether the commission is amenable to working towards some of these things or whether you're not.
Yeah, well, I think, and- This is, I legitimately say I think this is great, and I appreciate everybody who comes and provides input because that's some of the stuff that, that we've, I don't want to say lacked in the past. It's easier when there is, when there is this interaction. And, and I think we are, we really are thinking seriously of, hey, we've got this new Form Based zoning. It has a certain set of attentions with it or intentions, and we'd like to see it work. And if it needs to be tweaked here and there, we want to be able to, to support that. I think we just, as far as timing, we would need to have a, we need to get this on a future agenda to really be able to get into what this looks like and what our options are, to determine, to just weigh- are, to determine, to just weigh everything and decide, well, how far are we willing to go in terms of changing? Because with form-based, it's, the easiest way would really, directly, would be to create a, really get into the waiver process, but we have issues with that as well, because once you start opening things up, everything's a waiver. So I don't know if, I think January is pretty much spoken for at this point, and we, to a degree.
Set as a hearing for your first meeting, that's, that's fixed, other parts are movable.
There's movable, but we also have potentially a telecom meeting that, not quite sure where that's coming in. Yeah. But I would say that if not, if not potentially second meeting in January at the earliest, or, or maybe one of the February ones, we could put something together to really get a discussion going, and would certainly, I mean, it would be announced, and I hope you all come to hear what's happening.
Do you mean for us to come back and do other specific projects?
Well, I mean, if you're interested in hearing the discussions and that sort of thing, certainly, but it's more, I think you've given us a lot of what you're, what you're asking for and the path that you're heading down, and then we just need to assess, is this something that we could still feasibly do through form-based zoning, or does it make sense to change the underlying, and what type of an effort would that be to see how long that might take? And there may need to be a little bit of compromise here and there. I mean, even the one and two building thing, it's, it's interesting, because on the one hand, it's, well, what's wrong with the 33-unit building in that space if it fits into the landscape and it doesn't mess with infrastructure and that sort of thing? But there are reasons behind those numbers that came from the initial process, so we just need to understand what those are and why the limitations are what they are, and go from there.
But, but you mean that the board would discuss all those various issues?
Correct.
Or should we come back in to talk about specific issues with this?
No, I would say that we would have this on our agenda to talk through them, and you would be more than welcome to come in here and any clarifying-type things that you or anybody would like to add, you'd certainly be welcome. But I think we need to have that discussion first, just to get everything organized, and then we might come back with, here's what we're, what we're able to do, is that something you could work with?
Yeah, we'll stay in touch with Dean, and he's been very helpful.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It's a great option for that site.
Thanks.
Like to see things happen. And thank you for your inputs as well.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you guys do, and appreciate you being able to have a voice in a little bit more, so thank you.
Absolutely, and on the, on the process thing, and thank you for clarifying, Neil, but the, yeah, so once a project does get through the zoning parts of things, and then they would submit an application, and once that application starts going into review with the DRB, that's usually where there's the, the opportunities to say, okay, has this been considered, and all of that? Yeah, but yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
But that's, it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt to come in, like.
Oh, without a doubt.
A lot of times, you know.
It's too recent.
Right, right.
That's why we're here, we just want to know, I mean, information is so important.
Yeah, thanks.
And there is a large community across the state, of which we're part of, and we want to make it all work, and we want to make it all good for the entire.
Yeah. Well, yeah, thanks for engaging early, and you're welcome to come to any meeting.
Can we tell this was fun?
All, yeah, well, maybe not always.
It would be hard to go on.
Well, there you go.
Can't be any harder than coaching Little League, right?
Yeah.
Well, Anthony, put your name into Dean or Lee, if you are interested.
Yeah, right? Yeah, that's it.
We'll get there, I still chasing, you know.
All right, well, now we can get into.
If I go online, are the form-based all informations online for the Shelburne Town Site?
Yes, you can go under government to the planning department, and then there are two, the form-based code is being amended right now, so you want to go to the ones that are under, the amended ones, that are before the select board for consideration.
And it's through, I start with the Shelburne site, from there, and find the link?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, it should be, I just was looking at it myself, because I, checking on the details.
Well, you have a special reason for having all 100, no, 30 feet close to the road, or 30 feet back set back from the road.
That's probably.
What's the reason for that?
If we didn't have a bunch of stuff that we need to get through, and we only have an hour left, I'd be happy to get into that. Or if you want to.
Well, there's a short answer, I guess.
Some of it's actually described in the regulations, the purpose of it.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Knock yourself out.
Actually, it'll be a good, a good feedback for us if it's comprehensible to you.
Certainly.
Hopefully it is.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Sorry, yes, I had an answer, but I thought, well, that could lead to the next question, and the next, and the next group. I don't think, I never think of that part.
Just, I was thinking about Vice-Lunder when you were talking about that. How did Vice-Lunder, and just quickly, did they, they're.
Obviously, quite a bit.
Yeah, they're way back from what, they didn't have to.
So did they not do form-based? I don't think they went through some form-based zoning.
Yeah, form-based wasn't adopted then.
Thank Act 250 for that, because they, they were not interested. Act 250 was such a grueling process for them, that they were not interested, even with the increased density, it wasn't enough of a carrot to go through all that again, and the expense. So I hope you're listening, legislators.
All right, so let's move on to scenic musev mapping.
Completely different topic.
Yeah, right?
Let's just switch gears. Don't forget the clutch.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me. I know at our combined natural resources and planning commission retreat, we, some weeks ago, we discussed it briefly, and I'm happy to, to show you some of the things that we've been thinking about. So we're still at an early stage with the Viewshed analysis, as you know, I'm sure, more than, than you'd like to know, that the, the existing Viewshed map is, is fairly antiquated. It's not that there's necessarily anything wrong with it, but since that map was, was first constructed, probably, what, 25 years ago now, something along those lines, there've been, I'm sorry?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, so more than, heading towards 30 years. Obviously, there's, there's been great advances in data and analytical techniques. So the question is, can we build a better map than what we, we have now? And obviously, with something like Viewsheds, there's, there's, will always be an element of subjectivity. So it's, it's not that there is any one, one way of constructing that type of analysis, and it's not that the, the more sophisticated analytical techniques are better, but there are certainly things that the, the newer techniques can show, and then there'll be a question ultimately of, of what's creating something that's appropriate for Shelburne today. So I can show you some of the things we've been doing, then. So whether you use analog methods, as were used in the original map, or more, more modern and analytical techniques, you, you need to have points of perspective in developing a Viewshed analysis. Again, this is highly subjective, but with some of the, the newer data types, you can start to, to lend a little bit more objectivity, and, so these are various points in, in Shelburne. The existing Viewshed map had an, I won't call an arbitrary set of points, but lots of points along roads, and these ones here are, are also along roads.
Sean, would it be fair to say that some of the selection, it's behavioral, because intersections are places where people are stopping their cars, they're pausing, and they have an opportunity to look out, and so the choice of those locations reflect human behavior.
Yes, absolutely.
It, there were locations reflecting people's behavior.
And is it, we also, it's public advantage points, too, right? So it's, it's not, it's something that's somebody's property, necessarily standing, or is that, that's why we're.
That may have been a factor in the, the original analysis, and that would, would be an issue for any subsequent analyses as well. I guess the, the question is, with the available data types, can you construct something that is, that can, can be informative irrespective of property boundaries? And as Dean mentioned, though, it's, it's certainly, a lot of Viewsheds, and I'll show you an example of, of one that has been completed here in Vermont. The backbone of a lot of these analyses continues to be the, the viewing places from, from roads, because those are the, the ones that are, are probably most familiar to people, and certainly there's a, an economic component as well, when people are visiting town, what are the, the major Viewsheds that will help them form a, an opinion, a favorable opinion of, of a town like Shelburne? So the, in 1991, it was, I won't call it the, the Dark Ages or the, the origins of geographic information systems, but certainly, we've come a long way in the, in the nearly 30 years. In particular, there are various data types that are, are far more sophisticated, and the, the, the one that's, that's most important for the type of analysis that, that we're considering here is a digital elevation model. So it's basically a, a topographic model. And in 1991, for Vermont, probably the, the data set that was available was a 30-meter resolution, so you think of 30 meters, and maybe there was a 10-meter resolution, but in any case, with the, the data sets we have now, we have sub-meter resolution. So in 2016, there, there was a new data set acquired for this part of Vermont, Chittenden County, and it's, the data set is called LiDAR, you've probably heard of that, and there were, there were data sets, existing LiDAR data sets before that, but the most recent one has a point seven meter resolution. So when you, you think of 30 meters versus point seven meters, the, the types of analyses that you can perform, it's, obviously, it's, we were literally orders of, of magnitude higher resolution. So this is a, hard to see much detail from, from this here, the digital elevation map, but it's, it's a, a fine-scale representation of, of the landscape, every dip and fold. So remember those points that I showed you? We can take those points and superimpose them with a digital elevation model, and then try to develop a, an objective way of identifying those features on the landscape that are the, the most important, at least from the, the perspective that is, is typical for a Viewshed analysis. We're looking for those broad vistas that people will consider memorable. So there are a variety of techniques to capitalize on the availability of, of the, of these really high-resolution data sets, but there, there's a, a series of techniques called, literally, visibility analysis, and they're exactly what you would imagine them to be. So if we look at point number one here, we can use a few simple assumptions, along with the digital elevation model, to show what you can see from an individual location. So at, at point number one, which is the, it's the intersection of Cheese Factory Road and Dorset Street, Barstow, if you assume a viewer, average height, five feet or, or so, the, the perspective from, from that location obviously extends to the southeast, across Shelburne Pond, and really to the, the Heinsberg border. One thing I'll, I'll point out here, that the, this, this type of, of work, or at least what we've done so far, does not consider trees and other above-ground obstacles. There are ways of incorporating above-ground obstacles, but it, it makes for a much more difficult analysis, and then there's, there's still the question of what type of, of view is, is most important. Obviously, with, with vegetation, with trees, there are parts of the year, like now, when there's no foliage, so actually, there are, are vistas, there are perspectives that are in fact visible even when there are trees. But any case, just ignoring the above-ground features, that yellow indicates the, the different points in the landscape that are theoretically visible from point number one.
Within the town of Shelburne.
Within the town of Shelburne, yes.
Yeah, and I, that's, from that point, if you can see Campbellstown.
Yes, absolutely, and the analysis could be expanded to include a much broader area, but obviously, it just takes more time. So in, in this case here, the analysis was performed just on a digital elevation model that includes the town of Shelburne. But absolutely, you, in fact, you could, as you say, see landscape elements that are far beyond the, the borders of Shelburne in this case.
Sean, I think it's also just to verify, like Neil points out, you know, Campbellstown, without doing the full digital analysis of everything that we could possibly see, like Mount Washington on a clear day, from somewhere, just actually going out, standing on these spots, and, and like verifying that there is, in fact, stuff to see?
Well, that, yeah, that, that's part of, of the process, potentially. So this is just the, the analytical component, so we, we have the data, we have the, the spatial analysis tools to, to visualize with a very high degree of accuracy what you can see, again, just with the topography, not above-ground features. So it's the, the starting point for performing or developing an updated map, but it's certainly not the, the end of it. And as we'll discuss shortly, there, there are still many different ways to construct a Viewshed map, given its, its inherent subjectivity. So again, the terrain visible from point number one, and we can, we can do that for all of the, those points. And again, those points were selected for their prominence, but we could, you could certainly choose other ones as well. So from, I think it's point number six, which is the intersection of Spear Street and Irish Hill Road, obviously, there are some, some pretty broad vistas from there. We, we could ultimately do that type of Viewshed analysis from all of those points, and then, of course, interpretability becomes a, a significant issue, so lots of Viewsheds start to overlap. So we have to, to think a, a little bit more about how to condense this information into a, a feasible and meaningful form. So an, an example that exists for a location not too far from us, a fairly recent report a few years ago for, for Moncton, using very, very similar technology, they developed a, essentially a point system along major roads evenly spaced, and then, in, in their case, they, they specifically looked at a, kind of a cumulative concept called visibility. So what are the, the points on the landscape that are most visible from the, or are visible from the, the most, or the highest number of locations? And as you, as you would expect, the, the mountain range to the east, Hogback Mountain, that, that scores the highest in, in their, their scale, and they, they developed a, a fairly simple one, which just, you know, actually, just four different categories, very limited to very, very high visibility. So what they're doing in this case is that they are developing a, a quantitative method of scoring those features that are the most visible, and by implication, those are, are some of the areas that are most important for, for Viewsheds. So it's a, it's perhaps, it is fundamentally different from, say, the, the original Viewshed that, that Shelburne created, in which you're looking at a point and then judging the, the quality of, of that perspective from that point. This is actually scoring elements on the landscape that can be seen from the most, from the, the highest number of, of points. They also recognize that those points along roads are not necessarily the only ones, so I think they, they, in Moncton, they actually had a public meeting where they, they asked residents to identify important viewing locations that were, were not part of that regular system of points along roads, and they, they added those points to the, the same type of, of Viewshed analysis, and then they intersected all of those different viewing perspectives, and then identified those, those high visibility, visibility locations. So we've been looking at this model, and we have the data to perform the, the Viewshed analysis, but on our committee, and I suspect you'll probably have some of the same questions, that doesn't seem to answer all of the, the issues with Viewsheds. So you can identify those areas that are most visible, but you'd still need to come up with some way of, of ranking them. And there, there are potentially, you know, many different ways of doing that, and I would just say that among some of the. And I would just say that among some of the, some of the things that we were considering then for, for Shelburne, we could, as was performed in, in Moncton, look at visibility from a, a series of points along primary roads, but then look at other areas that perhaps are, are a little more subjective, combine those, those view sheds into a map. And then, one way that we've, we've considered of scoring them is to try to identify features within those view sheds that may either subtract or add to, to their value. So, for instance, there, we now have, as we discussed at our last meeting, our, our last joint meeting, there's high-resolution land cover data. So, we potentially could score view sheds according to the, the area or linear distance of various features that perhaps could detract from a view shed. If there's a high concentration of buildings or other types of, of developed features, potentially that could, could affect the view shed. Or alternatively, we, we could look at features that we know people would, would value highly as part of a, a view shed, whether it's forest patches, agricultural fields, areas such as, as wetlands that you'd suspect and perhaps might see wildlife. All of these things now can be factored into a potential analysis and ultimately trying to develop a score that would, would help identify a, or differentiate these sites so that you, you could make sense of them and ultimately make a map that, you know, everyone could recognize, everyone perhaps would recognize as being a, a legitimate way of, of looking at the landscape. So, as, as part of our, our work in the Natural Resources Committee, there are a series of tasks that, that we, we know need to be addressed before we can really formalize any type of map. And I can share you, or share these with you today, and I have actually dropped a couple here. Well, in any case, so, if we, we have the technology to identify these view sheds, how would we rank them? And again, there are a variety of ways of doing that. We could look at the, the area of that, that view shed, of an individual view shed, and then the cumulative area. We could look at the, the viewing distances, the degree of overlap, but then also the, the proportion of those view sheds that are, are occupied by things either you feel would detract from the, the quality of, of the view shed, or perhaps would, would add to it. Nope. For some reason, that top one is appearing first. So, one of the tasks certainly is, is to consider, as we've done with Moncton, what, what other municipalities have done here in Vermont, but perhaps elsewhere. But ultimately, there's, there's not going to be any single model that we would say, well, that's, that's the one for us, because it's literally all over the map, because there are so many different ways of thinking about the landscape and of interpreting the, the features that are meaningful.
Just to give a little context, other communities that have done view shed studies include Essex Town and Woodstock. So, there are some places that you've probably driven around that are already studied and included into other potential models locally, if you like what they've done.
Yep. And although I haven't done an extensive search, I suspect there are probably loads of them across the country as well, and ones that use very, very similar methods that potentially we could use with a, you know, high-resolution digital elevation model. So, the, again, the, as we've, we've seen, these analyses tend to, to be skewed towards high-visibility locations along roads. How would we, we look at, at view sheds that are, are not as prominent, but nonetheless might still, still be meaningful to not only residents, but others who, who visit Shelburne? And as always, you know, how do we incorporate subjectivity? So, the, the original analysis involved someone actually going out to those locations and looking at it and saying, well, you know, that's, that's a really nice, a really nice view shed, and we're, we're going to, to categorize that as exceptional. And there's nothing wrong with that method, but obviously, it's a...
He wasn't trained as a landscaper.
Yeah, exactly.
There was research behind that approach. It was very commonly used in the National Forest Service. That's where a lot of that stuff came up. Peter Owens is, is no fool, and so, he had, he had appreciation for the qualities that...
Absolutely. And I don't, I don't want to, to imply that what was done previously was, was somehow inferior, but obviously, we, we have different tools now. And then ultimately, we would want to develop a ranking scheme that would simplify the inherent complexity of the landscape to a map that could then be easily interpreted, whether it's for inclusion in some type of, of zoning and planning, or even just informally considering how the, how the, the view sheds are important, how, how they're part of the, the quality of life, how they contribute to the economic vitality of Shelburne. And I'm not sure exactly how we would do that, and certainly would be looking for, for any recommendations, but somehow, we, we would have to take the, essentially merge the, the, the excellent modeling capabilities that are now available with the inherent subjectivity of this type of exercise and produce a map that people would, could perceive as being a, an honest and legitimate attempt at, at valuing features that are, are important. And then ultimately, we would have to have people on the ground. So, we, we have these modeling techniques. All models need to, to be verified and then hopefully validated as well. And that's where certainly, I think there are some members of the committee who would be interested, at the Natural Resources Committee, but I'm sure a lot of other people would be interested as well. So, these are some things that, I would certainly, we can start the conversation now, but happy to, to continue at a, a later date as well.
Yeah. And you mentioned a couple of things.
I'm very interested in this as well. I think it's, I think it's interesting, and I like data and all of that. But my mind keeps jumping ahead to how, how we're going to use it, and those conversations get complicated very fast.
That's exactly what I wanted to ask about as well.
But that doesn't take away from the fact that having one of these maps in our inventory to be able to refer to, and that doesn't mean that it, that the criteria couldn't be tweaked or however that works, but I'm, I, I think once you start dealing in the world of subjective, and you're trying to mix that into how that gets into the regulations, yeah.
So, one possible illustration there would be projects that are reviewed by the Public Service, Public Utility Commission. And since energy facilities get special treatment now, we would be thinking mostly of things like towers. And so, some of the conversations we've been having about local regulations, we have to put that all aside because those things are still subject to review by the Public Utility Commissions. And having a clear public policy regarding what is valuable in terms of aesthetics is something that would really matter if the town had want to, if the town faced an application that was being heard by the Public Utility Commission and people were concerned. And I'll just wind the clock back, and Kate will remember this, when the, the Velco upgrade was being reviewed, it was an energy project reviewed by, by the state commission, there was a lot of discussion of aesthetics, and we didn't really have the tools, and we relied on experts to make these arguments about the aesthetic impact.
Well, we used Actu50, but the, the key was that, that little map. So, it's not nothing.
I think it's really important to have this.
We were able to, to use that, and that provided the legal standing to get that railroad undergrounded, you know? So, yeah, so it's really important. I think, you know, this gets back to that question again of, you know, what, what's the sort of build-out that we are imagining here, you know? Like, based on what the zoning allows, you know, what are, what's the worst-case scenario? You know, wall-to-wall building, right? And then, what, what would be, get to some kind of a, our version of what is ideal by looking at the worst that, that could happen, because that's what's allowed? And, you know, how do we get to what we would consider the ideal? What are the natural resources? What are the scenic views? Sometimes, I think those are sometimes at odds, and, and what are the places where it's, it's going to be trickier? Maybe we can identify where those place, maybe they're not that, maybe they're not as many of them as we fear there are. So, that's where I think the data can be incredibly helpful. And then we can start to put together, I, I would like to do some sort of, of, develop a set of visual guidelines for kind of what we're going for. You know, how do we want to fit the development in, where it's going to go? In the rural areas, you know, how do we fit development in so that we remain as rural as, as possible in that sort of pastoral sense that we have, more than a wooded sense here? And in the growth areas, you know, how do we make the growth that emerges looks like something that relates more to the village than just, you know, the burbs? We're kind of at a crisis point. We have some decisions to make, but anyway, the good news is that other places have wrestled with this and come up with some really great solutions. And I've actually been kind of collecting some of good examples from other places, and maybe we could sort of look through some of that and see what we think might, you know, be an approach we could try here.
With, with the broad perspective, I think the, the things that we've been talking about, where we're going to get into an overview of all the regulatory documents and eventually pursuing things like a unified bylaw, and as we're heading in that direction, I think these are the types of topics that are really good to keep in mind, because any way down that path is going to result in changes, and we would need to be thinking of how we incorporate these sorts of things. Like, I, I see it as from a Public Utility Commission kind of thing. When there are those types of projects, or the, the larger type things, I get it. You can say, well, here's another consideration is this is in this view shed, and that, that's a problem. But I see it getting incredibly complicated. Yeah, I, I see lots of complications when you, when you look at individual development projects, even like the one that we were talking about today. If you're building in the corridor and a building goes up, there's a building type, it's legal in that area. If it impacts a view shed, do we say no? Like, yeah, it's not that kind of a thing.
I mean, I look at it as it's another, more information leads to better decision.
Exactly. That's why, without a doubt, this is good.
To really simplify that, but that's, that's really what it is. But the, the, the potential pitfall is, yes, you look at it as a roadblock. Do you know what I mean? It's like, oh, well, then you're not going to do anything there. Well, I, I don't think it needs to be black and white.
Right, right.
As we have opportunity to, more data like this that we have, we can layer the data to look at. And we've talked about wildlife corridors or the watersheds where we have to worry most. If we look at it all together, and you would be able to put together a map, I assume I could not, of all those things, and say, okay, we have these five areas that we have three critical things overlapping, that gives us stronger, like, to stand on for protecting that. So, it's, it's another piece and an important piece of it, but that can go with the others, I think.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of work around finding that balance, because, and I like that idea, if you have certain criteria, and scenic views being one of them, and if you hit a certain number of those criteria, maybe that triggers something. Because otherwise, the more criteria you have, as we're looking at trying to simplify, simplify process and DRB reviews and that sort of thing, if you add more criterias that people could then challenge on and make, make an issue of, then you start drawing those processes out. Not to say it's a bad thing to include those things in the discussion, but there's a balance.
I think you just know that it's all about balance.
Yeah.
And I know that a few projects that we reviewed on the Natural Resources Committee, there's a particular section of the zoning regulations, it's section 800, Dean, that is supposed to consider aesthetic implications of development. And we've cited that on a few occasions, but it's never really received much traction because admittedly, that section is, it's a little squishy, and, and it'd be very difficult to, to really develop something highly specific that would accommodate, say, the, the aesthetic potential that you would identify from a view shed map. But as you say, hopefully, it could be a part of the, the, the stack of data layers that are, are used in, in assessing projects. And again, hopefully, we'll be able to develop a, a map that can, can help serve that purpose.
Well, I think one of the things that's been a challenge about particularly the aesthetic issue is, you know, what are the reference points, you know, that were, that were, that are framing what is a good outcome? That, that's, you know, that's very subjective and hasn't really been well-defined. So, that's where I think having some design guidelines about, you know, that could really be very character-of-the-area-based, so that, you know, there's a clear sense of, or a clearer sense of somebody on the DRB being able to answer the question, you know, of what is meant by development that, that fits in? What does that look like? What does that, what is the character of that kind of development? We have no idea really at this point. So, you know, oftentimes, it's like development that is shielded as much as possible. And that, I think that's going to be harder and harder to, to rely on the ability to do that. And they're going to be, maybe the cost of doing that is going to be you trash some natural resource by, because you're shoving things, you're putting, creating these big buffers for visual reasons. So, I think a better way is to find out, figure out how aesthetically do we integrate things a bit better, you know? And, and I think we, I, I think we have more ability to, to do that, particularly with the, the technology that you've been showing us, where you can really rotate viewpoints quite, quite easily. You know, it's kind of like SketchUp for the landscape or something.
Yeah, and certainly recognize the, the issue, as we've discussed at other meetings, the, the tension between hiding new development away, when in fact, the, the places where they would be most hidden are the most sensitive. So, from a, a view shed perspective, I, I guess I, I would argue that we'd be, we'd be looking to maximize the, the mid and background views rather than the, the foreground views. And I, and I'm using the technol, the terms that were used in the original view shed map. I think those are the, the three designations. And as we've discussed before, in thinking about the, the rural zone from a natural resources perspective, we would certainly want the development to be closest to the roads and maintaining the, the contiguity of the, the habitat beyond. But, you know, that, that does conflict to a certain extent with the, the view shed capability, or the, the view shed quality. So, and again, I would argue that maybe we, we would accept a lesser foreground views in favor of the, the background views.
Could get into types of projects too, because you're right, if you're putting development into areas that it's less seen, that's usually getting it into more compromised areas. And the example I've probably said before, just to reiterate, I think we're going to get into needing to make decisions around balancing with our resource usage and generation capability as well, thinking specifically solar. That, I think the way that our rules are now, there was a project a few years ago that I went, I attended a site visit, and one of the questions that really stuck with me was, they were talking about where the panels were going to go, and one of the questions from the group was, okay, and can, can, will this be able to be seen from that road over there? And I, for me, it's, just everything fell apart for me right there. It was, I, I get it, you, you don't want to have egregious development and that sort of thing, but there are some trade-offs here. And honestly, solar panels, if installed right and is blending into the landscape as they can, so you still maintain the rolling look, to me, that's a valid trade-off. I'm not going to speak for everybody, but those are the types of things that I think get really tricky. Yeah, I think that's where it just starts getting tricky, and it'll be intriguing. I mean, there are conversations we're going to have to have at some point, and this, this type of data is going to really help us out.
Yeah. You can't hide everything away.
Well, exactly. Right.
Be visible.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, the other way to sort of think, I work in a rural town, and one of the ways that we sort of think about solar arrays is it's a way to keep working land working in, it's another version of working, but at least, at least it's not a subdivision. And, you know, the economics are such that the second that becomes, you know, unproductive, they'll rip, they'll rip it right out. But it's, exactly, but it's a way to, it's a placeholder for, you know, something that's just not like another subdivision in the middle of nowhere. So, you know, if you kind of think of it that way, plus, you know, not to mention, you know, our planet, it does help to reconcile yourself with, you know, that we're seeing more and more of these things and come terms with it.
It would be interesting to hear, and maybe tonight's not the time to get into detail, but Woodstock, Essex, Moncton, what they're doing with it in terms of planning and zoning, if they're doing anything or if they're just at the sort of looking stages.
That's a good question.
Because they've, they've spent the time to develop reports and theoretically, they've incorporated them into their planning in some capacity. So we certainly have the advantage of looking at other models.
Essex did some really great work. Essex, I think Jericho was part of that too. Unfortunately, they didn't really make it into the regulations. So, but they did, but the planning document is really worth looking at.
They already exist on, I mean, if you're in Shelburne Spear, you can't build a five-story house, you know? I mean, there's already zoning rules prohibiting, you know, in certain areas, I suppose, right? I assume.
There are restrictions on height, so yes, in Shelburne generally, you're not going to be able to build a five-story building.
Yeah. Especially in rural areas. So, I mean, there's already rules with regards to, right, visibility or what you can hide or how tall things are or, I assume there are.
Well, not about this.
It's not based on views, it's not based on views, it's just based on rural areas or.
Yeah, I mean.
Which are related, in a way, too.
Well, they, they're, right now, they're kind of not. We'd like them to be more related. But right now, it's really kind of based on more just dimensional, the zoning bylaws sort of blind to some of those aesthetic considerations, like how things fit in and stuff like that.
One of the first good things is.
Development applications that I can think of in the rural area where, where views and visibility were an issue was a subdivision south of Shelburne Pond, where there was a lot of debate and discussion about how these large homes going on these big lots would affect the view as people drove along Shelburne Pond. And so the language that was referenced earlier in Section 800 of the subdivision regs, which is this kind of squishy language, that was the, that was what the planning commission at that time, which was doing subdivision, had to work with as they were working through with the developer. But it wasn't a matter of setbacks or minimum lot size or anything like that. It was a matter of, they were reviewing a subdivision proposal, they knew there were going to be residential lots and houses on those lots, and they were working with the developer, trying to get the developer to agree to push the houses in particular areas where they would be less seen or would be in the woods and screened by trees and not seen. But it wasn't like there was an absolutely clear thing in the zoning regs that said, you meet this number and you're okay. It wasn't like that.
So it's a tool, it's a guiding tool, but not a regulatory tool. And I think that's.
Well, it's a good thing to have this function as that, so we can really look at it. And if there is some room to move, like if the lot is this big and the building is this small, you know, it could really go over here, over here, over here. And to be able to ask the developer of a project like that to kind of move it one way or another, if we know that we have a viewscape going through one section of that.
Yeah, currently in Shelburne, it's more of an ask than a demand. I think in Woodstock, I'm trying to remember, they've had it long enough, and I do believe that they have worked their view shed analysis into their regs, and I think it's part of their conditional use process. So there would be an example of something where I think it's harder, it has a harder edge than what we have currently.
Do you think, just kind of circle back to your question, that the dimensional requirements that they're in the zoning regulations based on the zoning district, whether it be rural or commercial or whatever, you know, oftentimes, those are the result of historical development patterns, which is to say, when the first zoning regulations were written, never 1970 or something like that, somebody came in and was like, all right, these are all rural areas and these are all commercial areas and these are residential areas, so let's draw lines around them. And that's kind of instructed how development has happened over time. So now we have rural areas which have zoning dimensional requirements that say some small number of houses per acre or whatever. But there's nowhere that says thou shalt preference the view, areas of better views when you're deciding where on that property to put a house. So that's where I think this goes to, in some fashion or other. If we know where those views are, then we will be able to encourage people to put them one way or another. So to that end, I appreciate your conversation here this evening and presenting this. Is there something that we can do for you tonight? Do you have like, is there a specific like ask for us?
No, no, just sharing information.
And if you have any recommendations for developing a map that would, would help, what do you believe is an important zoning consideration, zoning and subdivision regulations, is if there is an element of this type of analysis that can inform the broader planning apparatus? So, you know, right now, we're just exploring some of the opportunities, but it's, as I mentioned earlier, we really could do anything that we believe is appropriate for the town. There's just no, no right or wrong answer to it. And as we've seen with the old maps and you see with the new, the newer ones as well, I mean, there'll always be the human component to it. We can't, we can't develop a purely objective standard for it. Now, there'll always be some, some sort of ranking that a commonly held view of a particular view shed is positive, and we believe that it should be preserved to the extent possible.
I certainly appreciate the Moncton example. I mean, if I think about driving, you're bicycling to Moncton to Hogback Mountains, that's what you think of, do you know what I mean? And so to the extent that it, it was identified as a place of high priority, high importance, that makes a ton of sense. And it seems like that was done with some degree of objectivity, which is there were going to, every 1,500 feet along the road or whatever the points were, we're going to run, run the math. That resonates. I don't know if that, how that resonates in Shelburne, but to the extent that there is an objective, as much objectivity as we can bring to the table, you know, to answer your question, I don't have, I don't have a specific question about what I want to come out of it outside of the most objective analysis that we can come up with to guide our planning work.
Yeah. Well, certainly, today, we could develop the type of map that then Moncton has and identify those locations that have the highest visibility across the town. And certainly, that, that is one way of quantifying the view sheds. As we've, we've seen though, that's certainly not the only way. And there'll be questions about, well, what are those, what about those views that you can see from only a few locations, but they're exceptional? And would they, would those receive some type of ranking that, that would preserve their quality as well?
Yep.
Or at least put them on par with, with other views? So it's, again, it gets to the inherent subjectivity of it, what do we really value? And the, the way that Moncton has done it, seems to work well for them, given that they, you know, they have a highly visible mountain range, that I'm sure for aesthetic purposes and others as well, that they, they want to keep that view as intact as possible, if they can.
You've only got 10 votes.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, they're.
But they face some of the same pressures as well, though, even though they're further out from Burlington.
Maybe a way to start is to kind of think about the distinguishing characteristics of the town. And it could be interesting to kind of crowdsource that a little bit, you know, get residents to weigh in on, you know, because we are at this sort of, you know, tipping point, I think, you know, of, it's worth having a conversation about what do we want to try and preserve so that, you know, it remains something that people recognize? I mean, for me personally, one of the, one of the really iconic experiences of Shelburne or of Shelburne-ness, as I think of it, is when I come down, going into the village, I come down Irish Hill Road, and that field that's on the left across from River Crest, I appreciate that every time I come down because it's, it's a vestige of the 19th century. Somebody 100 years ago or 150 years ago would come in, arriving to Shelburne would recognize where they were. And we have that. And for me, I've always thought, wouldn't it be great if we could somehow, you know, purchase that or just, that was what, one of the things that led the very contentious development proposal from a few years ago, what made it interesting to me, was the idea that they were going to shove all the development back further from the road. That was one of the options, that was the scenario, that they were proffering to the town in exchange for the sewer, ability to have sewer and increase the density. And I thought it was, it was actually a very compelling offer for that reason, because the alternative is just five-acre zoning, you could just have, you know, just basic old McMansions everywhere. I mean, that's probably, would be the highest and best use of that land, you know, through that very narrow lens. And I thought that would have been a real shame. So for me, the calculus was, yeah, I could see having more density further back if we could keep that wonderful vista, you know, and kind of framed it in a way that made that work. So I'd love to have more conversations that way with, and bring other people in, because I think the way that happened a couple of years ago was, was not the right way to advance a conversation like that. As a matter of fact, it, the outcome was that we could not have that conversation, which I think other people might have found, you know, worth thinking twice about if they had understood that, you know, what the reasoning was. So, so anyway, I think this idea of a very thoughtful approach is, is great and maybe, maybe we could, maybe starting point would be the old map with distinguishing characteristics as were, you know, you know, defined at that time. I think some of those are still valid. And then maybe broadening the conversation to get input from other people. I mean, you know, we could have an Instagram account for the whole thing and people could be invited to take pictures of like what's important to them, what would they, what would, what would they see as a loss if it were to go away?
Yeah, I think that certainly, we would want to have public input as, as well, given the subjectivity. Ultimately, we, we would need something more than simply a system of regularly spaced points along major roadways to really capture the flavor of the views that we have here. And then we would still have that chore of making sense of it and quantifying it a way that, that seems reasonable. But yeah, I absolutely agree that at some point, we'd have to.
But like Instagram, you could have a look, people could drop a pin and we could use that, those could be our data points, you know? I mean, in addition to, or, and you could overlay that with every 1,500 feet, see how this, this, you know, works. I don't know, it's just a night.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a good one.
Yeah.
Going to enjoy seeing how all this plays out. I'd say in, in your meetings, if additional questions come up or something, obviously, feel free to, to come back. I think part of this is just getting into it and moving things around and seeing how it shakes out best.
Yeah, again, we don't need to update the existing map. I mean, it's, if people recognize that it had certain strengths and adequately characterized views, then that's fine. We don't necessarily have to use the, the newer techniques, but I think there, there is the perception that there are subtleties that we can identify using some of the newer techniques that perhaps the analog methods missed.
Definitely, yeah. It's mind-blowing how far we've come. Relatively speaking, how quickly.
Is this the existing map that you're talking about, the 2018?
That's the map from the comprehensive plan. So it is, it is a kind of gussied-up version of this 1991 map that Sean has in mind.
Okay.
And it actually combines that 1991 map that Peter Owens did with some mapping that was done with David Raphael, a different landscape architect, as part of another project. So it's actually two people's work.
And I do want to be conscious of time as well. Are there any other questions or anything? All right. Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks for helping with the conversation. I mean, it'll be a while yet before we come up with anything, but if you have any, any suggestions, please let us know.
Sure thing.
Thanks for having me.
And then the last formal topic is, so you've just become a member of your Town's Planning Commission. Isn't that the document?
Yeah, well, that was the document, but yeah, there was, there is a slideshow that I don't intend to present because I don't think that you really are going to get from it what was. What I had understood as the task is to help people on the commission, more maybe the newcomers than the older timer, that what are the basics of this realm that you're working in are? And that document that I included in the packet is an introduction, a primer. And the slideshow that I have is a document that was created by the same folks essentially, covers more ground. I didn't reinvent the wheel, but a colleague of mine has done a, has enhanced it. I added some slides, but it's more like 60 minutes of stuff and it's not going to fit in 10 or 15.
Yes.
But, but I guess the thing I would say is, yeah, we could, we could do it as a fast forward in video. The thing I was going to say though, that I think would be helpful, or part of the, part of the pitch for why it's, it would be good to do this kind of thing, is a lot of the conversation that we were just having with Sean about how would this be used if you were all longtime planning commissioners and you all had the intricacies of the conditional use and site plan and PUD in your heads, you'd be thinking, oh, well, wait a second, not that long ago, we just amended the PUD regulations to up the open space requirement from what it had been to 60%. And what, how is open space requirement used in PUDs? Is to preserve resource areas that typically include natural resources or scenic areas. So you would have kind of intuitively understood the connection between the regs and some of these, some of these things. But it's really, there's not enough time to do this. I was just going to make the pitch that history is also kind of interesting. You know, somebody made some remark, I guess it was Neil, about when we started, Shelburne started zoning in 1963. It was one of the first places outside of the cities to do it. So anyway, how would you like to tee this up? I mean, you can just send questions if it's something you feel is worthy for another agenda, we can put it later.
Well, from a presentation perspective, is that something that's on a drive that could be viewed?
Yeah, absolutely.
You can hit on the drive and watch it.
Well, no, it's not a canned presentation. It's, it is a series of about 60 slides, but it covers more ground than you really would need to. I mean, as things were going by, but yeah, absolutely can upload it.
I know we have a tight schedule, for me at least, I think it'd be really worthwhile to hear you go through it, because I feel like I could do a better job with that background, but.
But it's not tonight.
No, not right now. Please.
Plan, plan it, yeah.
And there is, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's an audio version that was created several years ago, not by me, but, I mean, there are different ways people could access this if they wanted to, but.
What do you think would be the most effective information across?
How many people read, I mean, there are some people like Kate who really don't need to. Neil's done time in the trenches in planning and zoning, and so this is pretty familiar to him.
No, I'm more interested in the extent that there's learning about Shelburne's documents in particular.
Right. But the stage was to be set for a more detailed discussion about our conditional use and our PUDs and our site plan, so, because people would need to understand what they are and how they're different and why there are these different things and why isn't it all just one thing?
Well, because there's, there's that aspect of it, and then there's also. Well, because there's, there's that aspect of it, and then there's also just a, an orientation of understanding the documents that we're working with.
Yep, right. And that, that was going to be on the heels of, oh yeah, okay, yeah, there, now I get that site plan is this, and that's why we have this separate site plan section, so that when we get to the site plan section, you'd have some idea of what it is that it's attempting to do.
And if we're talking about a unified code.
And if you're talking about a unified code, you could be asking yourselves, well, what really are the critical things after all? I mean, ultimately, you could reduce a set of zoning regs to a table, and you could reduce it even more to a list. It all just depends on how long the list will be, and just how many things you're trying to accomplish with it.
That would solve and create a lot of problems.
Solve and create a lot of problems.
As a suggestion, maybe one of the January meetings, we could start it, say, an hour earlier or something, and have that presentation be, like, just walk through that upfront?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just make it an optional, so that, you know?
Yeah. Probably the most important thing to cover is under other business, that is something that I'm realizing has to do with this conversation that we were having with these folks about the Bowling Alley property, and something I'm realizing was not in the right document that was sent, sent to Maya, so it, I can cover it, show it on the screen?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Well, it came to my attention that when the map was incorporated in the form-based zoning, So the stage is set, this is a new laptop here, it's tinier than I'm used to. So it'll take just a second. So we removed this brick colored area, and there were a couple of graphics floating around, and the map that is included in the form-based zoning that's warned for public hearing that's going to need to be corrected, has the brick area gone, but the, the lines that depicted the setbacks, they didn't get incorporated in the document, in the version of the graphic that went to Maya, they don't, they weren't changed. And so, this will become more obvious in just a second, because it's the same area that these folks were... So you, you can see that this is the brick area, this is the, this is the frontage zone that was retained. There was previously a frontage zone right in here, okay? You can see that the brick color's gone, but this dash line really needs to line up with this dash line. And those numbers need to be taken off. And there is a version with that, but I'm realizing that that didn't, so that's just a somewhat, somewhat important, but not that difficult to correct fix. So I wanted everybody to be aware of that, and I will be investigating what the most efficient way to do that is. And then the only other thing I would say is that as part of this general discussion, and people's willingness to consider multifamily developments that would comply with the frontage zone, so in other words, have the buildings close, I don't have an application yet, but we are fielding inquiries from developers who are actively pursuing projects that would meet the setback requirement under form-based zoning. So it isn't, it is not proving to be a problem for everybody.
Yeah, for me, I think that's a case, I think specifically with that lot. I mean, I, I agree that...
Within a stone's throw of this lot.
Right.
I'm just, yeah, my, my point is that within a stone's throw of this lot, a developer is, is working up a project that would meet the, for multifamily, that would meet the build-to-zone requirements.
Okay.
Yeah. Problem with that, too, because, but it has the access point right in the middle of the lot, it's like this one does as well.
It's, it's not the question of the access point in the middle, it's just, I'm, I'm addressing the, the comment that was made, having to do with can't have residential that close because of this quality of life impact. I'm simply saying that there are other developers or exploring projects that would be that close.
You're talking about the setback?
Yeah.
I didn't want to mention it, because I have no intention to, to sound snooty or anything, but I, I did go into the, the building that's, the South Burlington Form-Based Building, that's on the corner by the movie theaters.
The bank in there?
Yeah. I, I went in and they, they showed me some apartments, I was just curious, and the road noise wasn't as bad as I thought. Now granted, I have lived in a city on a road, and so I, there, you expect there to be some noise, but, yeah, it, it is about finding balance, and obviously, the various parties have their strong biases and desires, so it's, it's more just...
But don't forget also that the current construction is always setback, right? So it's not really that much of a, it's an improvement to have something new and more useful than a building...
Oh, the existing building?
Yeah, yeah, the bowling lane.
Right.
The decrepit building, you know?
Yeah, I honestly, for, at least my, my view of that, and I'm happy to be convinced otherwise, but to me, it's the, the uniqueness of that lot with the, with the light right in the middle of it, that doesn't jive with the form-based concept of a building being up against the road. Because the original, what they brought to us, the original plan, was to have a building on either side of that intersection, and then that becomes less economically viable. So I, I would certainly be interested if there are other ideas of how that could be developed within the context of the rules, but also, I imagine that there are, I mean, from a town perspective, that there is a desire also to find projects that fit with the community, and affordable housing is a thing that...
And we need more of it, right?
Right.
But still, I think we, we have form-based zoning for a reason.
And, and I remember a story, one of the contractors I worked with on, you know, a project years ago, saying, he worked with a painter, that when the, this contractor complained about the painter's job, he said, well, it's better than it used to be. It's, it's not a matter of like, doing a building that's better than what's there by a marginal degree. We're trying to do something that's, that's to this bigger standard, this form-based code standard, that's not just, you know, a compromise that doesn't have to be made. I, I do feel that Tyler really could have made that work with the setbacks and with the density and all that. The two building versus one building question, I see the economics of that, and, and that, you know, that, that's hard to make economics work when you're doubling up everything, but, so that aside, he could really make that work with the form-based zoning, I feel. And, and it would still, it's just that, it seemed like they didn't really want to, they're, they're trying to, I, I think they want to see how they can make it the nicest for how they think the residents are, you know, with a view of the lake for, you know, like, most of the units and that kind of thing, but...
Is there a view back there? I don't know. There's a lot of trees back there.
If you're up three stories high, I think there's one, yeah. And, and the farther back they have, the farther back they, they get on the lot, it's, it's got ramifications for the neighbors behind. So they're putting this three, four-story-high building next to a trailer that's 12 feet tall, and, and they're crowding those trailers back there as opposed to crowding the road. So it's, it's not without consequence when they move the building back off the road. There's, they're, they're hurting one set of residents compared to another set of residents. It's a, it's a tricky trade-off.
I'm sure for them, cost is a big factor, too, right? So they're, obviously, they're affordable housing, so they're not looking to add cost by maybe complicating it, so they, they're moving it to where it's easier to build. That's my guess, but...
Yeah, the thing is, it's such a gradual slope all the way across, that there's not an easy spot to put it. It's...
Except where there's a garden building.
It's, they've got a building this long, and it takes up this much slope, just about wherever they are, so it seems like it's not a cost thing. It, it, it can be done, I think, with, you know, with the same, the same cost.
The other part of the setback issue was trying to provide access for the, for the park to use the light, correct?
That's why I keep coming back to that, the unique lock constraints.
Right, right.
Because that's going to be a factor no matter...
There's a give and take there. There's definitely a give and take there. They came in sort of with the starting position, saying this is where we want it to be, but if you really dig back into it, you're like, well, okay, so here, that road, the, the access road, you could say, well, okay, which is what I was going to sort of ask, what if we just adjusted the form-based zoning to say, well, that front yard built its own, or whatever it is, take it off the access road, right? I mean, instead of the main road, how does that impact it? And if that's 30 feet, then that's like 50 feet off the main road, and they're at 100 feet, so we come down the middle somewhere, you know what I mean? We bring the building up a little bit closer. I'm not sure that that's actually sort of aesthetically the best thing, to have a road and a road and a building, but it's, it's sort of like, what, what...
It's a driveway more than a road, it sounds like.
There's, there's, it's going to be a give and take, there's some, there's some middle ground there that, that needs to be found.
We're also talking about making zoning changes. We're not, I mean, we're talking about a specific case, but whatever we do will apply to all the cases that come. And so if we set that, we could have people, and I know that was just an example, but then, everybody's like, okay, I want an access road on the side, and we come up with a four lane. So that's, that's what I keep wondering when we hear these, I think it's really helpful to hear the information and see the cases, but it's also, creating a fix for one has a lot of implications.
That's a really important point.
And that's what I'm still wrapping my head around.
You're absolutely right. I mean, this one, I mean, that access road piece, where they're saying, well, we don't, there's this adverse possession piece, where the, the mobile home park may have some right to have that there, and if they, if they have a right to have that there, then they won't ever be able to build anything there. Does it agree?
But they didn't know, they weren't sure.
From a surveyor's conference on the subject of adverse possession, it, really, the issue isn't adverse possession, it's a prescribed easement that, that would be relevant here. So if people are interested, I would be happy to send out this PowerPoint, which I think is pretty good. It'll give you some understanding of what those issues are.
As far as you know, there's not an easement? There's no easement?
As far as, if there was an easement, there wouldn't be a question of adverse possession or prescribed, or a prescribed easement.
Right. They'd have to work within that easement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good discussion, and I think that we just, we'll figure out what agenda that fits on, because I think it'd be interesting to get into that. And also to reiterate your point, Megan, that, yes, we have this as, as an example, but the idea isn't that we're changing the regs to make this project work, it's more to see the challenges of this project, recognize what those challenges are, and figure out how we can update the regs to accommodate a broader range of projects without violating our other constraints. And the idea of modifying the underlying regs, on the one hand, it sounds like, yes, that could be easier than undoing form-based zoning that would have much bigger effects down the road, but...
They care.
But, yeah, as long as it can get done, the, yeah, they wouldn't care. But from our perspective, because every time we change something, it's another thing to manage, and other, like, it's, we're trying to get smaller, not bigger, and all good to keep in mind.
They were asking, I mean, if, under the form-based zoning, it's not like they're saying, can you change this one thing in the zoning? It, I, like, our tally is like five things, at least.
That was for the density, that's what they were pushing for.
To get the density, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But there were five things that were out of compliance with the form-based zoning in order to get the density.
There's a lot of back and forth that would happen here. I think we just need to give it a good look from a regulatory perspective and see how far we're willing to bend, because, I mean, like, like I was saying, the easiest way, in a, in a perfect world, you could just have a waiver process that a, like, as long as there's a standard set of rules that could apply, and you know that the decisions to use the waiver are done in a rational manner that are very consistent, that's great. But as soon as you have the waiver, that's an opportunity to challenge, and then things get hung up, and we make life more difficult.
That there's a social benefit to this that, that makes the zoning changes easier to, or, you know, kind of sidestep in a way, or, because there is a social good to this, right? We all agree that there is a need for affordable housing, more people to, you know, that can afford to live here, right?
Yeah, that's in the town plan.
So that's a social good, right? It's subsidized in a way, right?
It is, it is housing that would be subsidized. I mean, maybe what you're getting at, John, is the idea that, yeah, zoning regs could incorporate some kind of system where, depending on how many different social benefits that are provided, the project gets points, and the more points it has, the more of something it gets. That's...
Something like that.
Yeah. I mean, it needs to be structured, because if it's just about, hey, we like it, and it's going to be great for the community, then it gets to be pretty hard to administer after two or three projects.
Because everything becomes an exception.
Yeah, there's a lot of candy shop there.
Yeah, that's a candy shop.
Crosswalk Liquor Store, yeah.
If you want to encourage affordable housing, we could say, you get increased density for affordable housing, something along those lines, right?
The housing sub-community has had some conversations about this. You know, in a perfect world, maybe we, if we rewound the clock, these very significant increases in density might have been connected to things like providing affordable housing. But we made a pretty substantial, very substantial increase in density without that hook. In some other communities, they would make that kind of substantial increase in density, but the hook would be something like affordable housing.
Do you mean form-based zoning when you're saying the substantial increase in density, or are you talking about...
Well, the example of being able to go from 19 to 33, that's...
That would be traditional.
Something, too.
The 19 was the traditional.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would be a way to, to, to make the change to the underlying zoning, that could be the, the justification. To do it that way would be to provide a density bonus for affordable housing.
If you work with the underlying zoning and you allow, you allow densities that were comparable to form-based zoning, but in that instance, you made the, that density contingent on something other than form-based design, it's on social benefits. We'll call it the Jean Amendment. And it could be that it's on, you know, three factors, because, you know, in the village, so this is where having institutional memory about the different parts of the zoning, the Shelburne Village District has a density bonus for PUDs, and that's what allowed the creation of Harrington Village, in combination of affordable housing, land conservation, and good design.
Yeah, maybe the design can just be influenced that way.
I don't, I, I don't believe there was an age element, affordability...
They can be encouraged to spruce it up a bit, too, aesthetically. Looked like an office building, honestly, but...
And I think that what they were trying to see is, like, which ones, like, you're saying, it's a negotiation, which, which ones we're willing to, to give on a little bit, and then the process of design, it's iterative, and, you know, if, if we could give them some indication, like, you know, the two buildings can be combined as long as they try to look like two buildings, so that you can have the economy of all that infrastructure, then Tyler goes back to his boards, and he reworks it to meet all the other things. But there are some things that kick in another set of solutions, and that might be just one of those things. If they can do two buildings, because, or one building, because that seemed to be their, the whole gist of their earlier part of their presentation, that two buildings were not working, two buildings were not working, they were all saying the same thing.
But then it's still two buildings, technically.
Yeah.
To get around the other rule, yeah?
Yeah, so if they have one building, then maybe all the other rules, they can make that design work within all the other rules that are going on, as long as we give them some indication that, you know, something like that, that we're clearly, well, I'm clearly, but I don't know about everybody else, you know, might be willing to, to give on.
Is there a way that, without going into architectural, you know, depth here, that you can make two buildings, or one building into two? I mean, that, that concept, so basically, what connects them is kind of a corridor that's not really a building, but it's more of a...
I think that's language we'd have to address as well, to make sure that...
You know what I mean? It's kind of like, the buildings are connected, but they're not really one building, right?
And all of that, not to cut us, but...
And we're not in California, where it's hot.
Sure, yeah, especially today. But given the time, and we are going to, we'll, we'll figure out what agenda this can get onto, I think it'll be an interesting discussion. Was there any other, other business that you had?
Except happy holidays, sir.
Yeah, I was...
Did you enjoy the happy new year?
I was going to say, it's the last meeting of the year, thank you all for, thank you to the new blood that's joined this year, for sure, and to the old guard that has been...
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, and looking forward to another, another productive year. So thank you, everyone. I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right. Moved by Stephen, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. All right. Thank you, everyone.[1788.63][1788.63]